I now call the Huntsville City Council Meeting to order. If all of that would like to or unable to, please rise for the invocation led by Blake Kirk, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Boy Scout Troop 70.
Let us pray. Oh gentle goddess and loving God, we pray that you will grant unto this council gathered here tonight the judgment and wisdom to make the best decisions that they may for the governance of our city. And further, we pray that you will visit upon these chambers an atmosphere of comity and peace, so that all who seek to make their views known before this council may do so in an environment of civility and respect, without needless ranker or hostility. These things we ask of you as children would of their loving parents. Trust me that you will ensure that we receive those gifts that we truly need. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Kirk. And we have with us tonight the Boy Scout Troop 70. If a representative would like to go to the microphone and tell us why you're here and what badge you're working on?
Hi everyone.
Introduce yourself too, please.
I'm Logan Doloff and I'm from Troop 70. We meet at First Baptist Church in Huntsville and we're all here tonight to earn our citizenship in the community merit badge.
Welcome. If we can help you any way, let us know.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Council members, the minutes from the regular meeting held January 9th have been received and they'll stand approved. There's no objections. We're now at resolutions and special recognitions. We have recognition of the Huntsville High School 6A State Championship Swim and Dive Team. Mayor Battle.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a state championship team here tonight that we would like to recognize. I'd like to ask Coach Patterson to come up. We also have some all-state football players here tonight, and I don't think you'll confuse the two, from the swimmers and the football players. It's a great night to have all these young people here who have done great things for our community and made a place on the history books for this community. So Coach, you want to tell us about it?
I will. And it's my pleasure tonight, I'd like for Coach Steve Hall of the dive team Huntsville High School to come forward and Susan Swing of the swim team, if she would come up here with us. And they're going to introduce their team, but not mistaken, this is two years in a row, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, we've already made the reservation for you next year. And so y'all come on down and we'll just, we'll make it an annual event.
You beat me to the punch, because I was going to ask you to go ahead and do that.
We'll do it. We'll reserve parking for you, okay? All right, if you would introduce your team, please.
Certainly. We have four members of our team this year, if you would join us over here on the left. Jordan Bagwell, he's a senior this year, been diving with us for several years Huntsville High School. Ryan Holden, I don't believe is here tonight. He and Ian Taylor, Ian, are both juniors. And Taylor Young is a 7th grader that's on our team. Taylor?
Right here.
And I'd like to, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the city council for providing the, and maintaining the nautatorium for us to practice in, because not only do they have one meter and three meter boards, they have two of them, and there aren't too many municipalities around the country that have that capability, and we certainly appreciate it. It's a great place for us to practice.
Thank you very much.
It is my pleasure to introduce the 2013 Alabama High School State Championship Men's Swim Team. And again, like you said, this is a little back-to-back for us. We were also state champions last year. I'm going to start with the boys. We do have one girl that we're going to acknowledge later. Gus Arnold, who's a junior, not with us tonight. Spencer Baldwin, sophomore. Parker Baldwin, who's a senior, who unfortunately is not with us tonight. Our middle school representative Caleb Chance, who's in 7th grade.
All right. Caleb, congratulations.
Senior Carter McDonald. Carter was part of the 400-yard freestyle relay that won gold in the state. Paul McNeely, who's a sophomore. Nick Nury, freshman. Cade Overbeek, who's also a freshman. It's nice to say freshman, that means we have a lot of young swimmers. Austin Smith, who's also a freshman. John Smith, who was another part of that gold medal relay. He's a senior. Kieran Stevens, who's a junior. Stone Strankman, who's also a senior. Jared Sutvin, who is a junior, who was also part of that gold medal relay. And Trey Winsinger, who's a senior, who is the fourth member of that gold medal relay who wasn't here tonight. And then it is my pleasure to introduce our only individual gold medal winner from the Huntsville High School Swim Team. She's a junior, her name is Elise Morrell, if you'll come up here. Morrell, Elise Morrell. I knew I would say it wrong.
All right. I'm going to give these to you.
Okay.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, this is our state championship swim team. Congratulations to each of you. And if y'all would make the big loop around here and shake everybody's hands, we sure would appreciate it. Thank you.
Come on over and shake hands with all these old men.
In a year. Good to see you.
Hey, thanks for what you're doing. Thank you. Thanks so much.
7th graders, and you're already a state champion. Congratulations.
Congratulations. That's a great job. See you next year. Good job.
Congratulations, guys. Congratulations. Congratulations, man. Appreciate what y'all do.
Great. See you next year.
Man, good to go, guys.
Congratulations.
Let's go ahead and do this.
What you do.
See you next year.
All right. Good.
Also tonight, we have with us six players and one coach, who are the all-state players from the Huntsville area. And Coach, would you like to introduce those guys?
Yes sir, Mayor. The big question is, has these guys come up here tonight, has Councilman Russell ever thrown a flag on any of these guys? If y'all might recognize him without his hat on. All right, we have six young men that made all-state here from the city of Huntsville area, and has some really good teams this year in this community, so we're going to, they were selected on the state sports writers poll. As I call your names, if you'd please come up, Huntsville High School Josiah Pavlik. Johnson High School Devon Johnson. The next four are from Madison Academy. If you get a look at them, you can see why they won the 3A State Championship. Taylor Zach. And also from Madison Academy, Keryon Johnson. We have with us tonight the coach of Madison Academy, Coach Eric, or Dr. Eric Coe. And this is the second consecutive year that Madison Academy won the state football championship, actually was runner-up the previous year, lost a heartbreaker there, very easily could have been three in a row. So Coach Coe, we've got your parking reserved for the next few years now here as well. And you can see, these are some outstanding young men. This is selected by the sports writers across the state of Alabama, and congratulations to each one of y'all. I'd like Coach Coe to come down just for a minute, and since they had so many, we didn't have the entire team here, but just tell us a little bit about, you know, what happened with y'all.
Thank you, Coach Patterson. First of all, I want to thank the city of Huntsville. It's an honor to represent the city of Huntsville. I want to thank Mayor Battle and all the councilmen and women tonight. These guys have worked tremendously throughout the course of their career, and these, we would love to have all, the entire team here tonight, but obviously there wasn't room. So these four guys are certainly cornerstones and key ingredients to our success the last few years. And a couple of them will be graduating, going off to college, we'll miss them, but a couple of them are coming back, so we hope continually have some success to represent the city of Huntsville on the football field. Thank you so much.
Just start the line right here with the mayor. Follow him. If you want to.
Good job, guys. That's a great achievement.
Good job, guys. Congratulations.
Good job, man. Also, tonight's a special night. It's not often that we get to honor our own employees, and we have a longevity pin to present tonight. Chuck Haygood, if you'll come here, Chuck usually sits back there and he never comes forward, but Chuck has a service pin tonight, which we are presenting to him. For 20 years, he has been our clerk treasurer, but he's been working for the city of, you've been clerk's clerk treasurer since 1979, right?
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine, since 1989. But for 40 years, he's been working for the city of Huntsville. And that's something very special. When you get these service pins, you get it, and there's a very elite crew who get these service pins. And that elite crew are the people who have been the foundation of this city. You're one of the reasons that we get the number-one accolades of this, best place to retire, best place to start up a business, because of people like you Chuck, who have put up, put up with us for 40 years, but also have been part of the success of Huntsville for 40 years. So I want to say thank you and congratulations, and here's your 40-year pin. And if you would go down and shake all the council members' hands. Congratulations. And, Mr. President, if we could take 15E out of order, we have with us tonight a county commissioner who, who has a check, and we will make sure we get his check before he leaves.
Sure, we don't want him to have second thoughts. Council members, is it okay to take 15E out of order?
Sure.
15E is a resolution authorizing acceptance of donations. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. showers, discussion. Halls in favor accepting the donations, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries Mayor Battle.
Good. Phil, if you would come up, Phil Riddick is our county commissioner here, and Coach, if you and Mr. Ivy would come up too. This is one of those cases where governments work with governments. The county commission got with the city of Huntsville. Phil had the land and a dream of making this into a park. It's in the area town where we talked, talked about making it into a park, and tell them the rest of the story, Mr. Ivy.
It's going to be a success story. We look forward to working with, we found, Phil had a piece of blight land, I guess you could call it was a dump site. We're going to take it and turn it into a crown jewel in South Huntsville, and we look forward to doing it. Tonight on the agenda will be the first contract that we'll let. That will start with a dog park, we'll have a pavilion there, we've already got the playground equipment purchased, it's on-site, that'll be in the summer. We're working with the disc golf association, the golf course will be starting as soon as the weather breaks, they'll put it in. We'll have fields, have a dog park, we'll have a playground, so we're really looking forward to it. We're working on it, Mayor. Hopefully one of these days, he's going to put a splash pad in that into town, we'll really have something to be proud of.
Tell them about where it's located?
It's on Jenny Thompson.
Phil?
Yeah, this is, as the mayor alluded to, this is at least one of the first that I've heard of, a cooperation of this nature, where the county commission and the city got together to do a joint project like this. And it's, so far, it's been a really pleasure to work with the mayor and Park and Rec Greg and Steve here, and want to thank Councilman Oshewski too, for lending his support to the project, down in his, this will be down in his district. So we're really looking forward to this, it's coming together right now. We have two checks here tonight. One was, I guess, to kind of complete the project, with the, with the contract being that we come up a little bit short, so we need some money for that. But we also have another one to go along with it, to do the disc golf. So we have a check here for $50,000 to complete the park, and another 10 for the disc golf. So...
And that is a sport, right?
Yeah. It's not frisbee golf, I'm told. It's disc golf.
Right, right.
So...
Well, thank you very much, and we appreciate it. And if you'll go down and shake the council members' hands, anybody who brings $60,000 gets to shake everybody's hand.
Come back again soon.
Mr. President, I've just brought in $60,000, that's all I can do tonight, so challenge each of the council members to match that.
Okay. Coach Swing, now would be a good time, if you want to go. If any of the students need to go home and study, now would be a great time. We have one resolution for adoption only, it's 2A, resolution congratulating General Dennis Vye, the commanding general of Army Material Command, as a recipient of the 2013 Alumni Leadership Award from the Thurgood Marshall College Fund.
Motion.
Second. Motion by Dr. showers, the second by Mr. Kling, discussion. Halls in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries, Dr. showers.
Mr. President, General Dennis Vye, the commanding general of Army Material Command, is recipient of the 2013 Alumni Leadership Award from the Thurgood Marshall College Fund. Speaker not on?
Okay, now we're good.
All right. The Honorable General Dennis Vye, the commanding general of Army Material Command, is the recipient of the 2013 Alumni Leadership Award from the Thurgood Marshall College Fund. I will be presenting this resolve on behalf of the mayor, council members, this weekend, Sunday the 26th, at a function, and at that time, we will read the resolution at that time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. For announcements tonight, 4A 2 and 4A 3 were deleted from our agenda, and that's why we skipped them. 15J has been deleted, 16A 1 has been deleted. We're going to, the planning department would like us to pass 14, 14B tonight, if we could, by unanimous consent, it's an urgent matter, and I would ask that we consider 9B 1 a board appointment for the Library of unanimous consent tonight, because they have a vacancy and want to fill it. So we will do that when we get there. We have no business with outside legal representation, we do have public hearings be held. 6A 1, now is the time and place for a public hearing on ordinance number 13-962 zoning newly annexed property lying on the west side of US Highway 431 South and north of Sutton Road to Highway Business C4 District. This was set December 5th, 2013 regular council meeting. Ms. Letto?
Lisa Letto, Planning Division. This is 1.38 acres of newly annexed property. It's here on the west side of Highway 431 South and north of Sutton Road. The proposed zoning is Highway Business C4 District. There are two existing businesses located on the property, and Planning Commission is recommended approval.
Thank you, Ms. Letto. Does anyone from the public wish to address the council on this particular issue? The public hearing is now closed.
Motion approved.
I've got Dr. showers and motion. Mr. Kling, will you second that? We have a second, is there a discussion on this, this issue? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on ordinance number 13-964 rezoning propping lying south of US Highway 72 East and on north side of Old Gurly Road from Highway Business C4 District to Residence 2B District. This was set December 5th, 2013, the regular council meeting. Ms. Letto?
Yes, this is the area that we see here, it's 2.66 acres. This is Highway 72 West, and here is Old Gurly Road. It's the hatched property that you see here. There are three residences on the property at this time. And to give you a little background, at one point, there was a large shopping center proposed for this area, and these property owners had their properties rezoned to Highway Business C4. Since that time, the shopping center did not happen. They still live in these homes, and they have trouble getting refinancing or home improvement loans with properties owned commercial. They would like to rezone their properties to the previous zoning of Residence 2B District, and Planning Commission is recommended approval.
Does anyone from the public wish to address the council on this particular issue? Public hearing is now closed, is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion, motion by Dr. showers, second by Mr. Culver. Ms. Letto, Letto, how is this not spot zoning?
There are three properties here, and it's back to an existing use, so it would not be spot zoning in that it's not a zoning that's taken place to specifically benefit those property owners. This is just putting back the zoning that was, because the plan did not happen. So it's, it's not a spot zoning where we're just zoning one parcel of property for the benefit of that particular property owner.
Okay. Further discussion? Halls in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, it carries. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on a resolution authorizing a city clerk treasurer to assess the cost of the boarding and securing against certain properties.
The property identified in this, in this resolution was declared unsafe by Community Development. The owners were given 30 days in accordance with the unsafe building ordinance to get permits and start work on correcting the noted violations. Since the owners failed to respond to the notices, and since the properties were standing open and accessible, Community Development boarded and secured these properties. Attachment A identifies the owners and the dates that Community Development took action, and the cost for boarding and securing these properties. The total cost was $245.20. The owners received written requests for payment and failed to respond, so I'm requesting that assessments be placed on these properties to collect our costs. The owners were notified of this proposed action.
Thank you. Does anyone from the public wish to address the council on this particular issue? Public hearing is now closed, the chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. showers, discussion. Halls in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on a resolution authorizing the city clerk treasurer to assess the cost of the cutting and removing of grass and weeds against certain properties. Mr. Benyon?
The resolution identifies 35 properties that were in violation of the city's grass and weeds ordinance. The properties are identified on attachment A by the owner and location. The owners received written notification by regular mail that they were in violation of our ordinance, and were given 14 days to correct the violation. All 35 owners failed to respond, and Community Development issued work orders to cut these properties at a total cost of $7,393.85, and an average cost of $211.26. Attachment A also identifies the date and cost for cutting these properties. The owners received written requests by regular mail for payment, and they failed to respond, so I'm requesting that the property assessments be placed, that property assessment be placed on these properties in order to collect our costs. The owners were notified of this proposed action and could wish to speak tonight.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone from the public wish to address the council on this particular issue? Sir, if you go to the microphone, please. State your name and address for the record.
I'm Bill Henze, southeast Huntsville. I'm kind of astonished that...
Sir, can you say your name again, loud, please?
William Henze.
How do you spell the last name, please?
H-E-N-Z-E.
Okay, sir, and if you'll state your address, please.
1311 Hiwan Trail, southeast.
Welcome.
I'm kind of astonished that you're taking time up from this meeting for this and the previous issue. I would think these are routine procedures that were established years ago. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone else from the public wish to address the council on this particular issue? The public hearing is now closed, the chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. showers, discussion. Halls in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on a resolution authorizing demolition of an unsafe building constituting a public nuisance located at 2600 Trail Ridge Road. Mr. Benyon?
Okay, we have photos available for this. We are asking the council to authorize the demolition of an unsafe building constituting public nuisance located at 2600 Trail Ridge. The above referenced property was cited on November 13th, 2013, as a public nuisance. The owners were issued a notice to demolish the structure. No work has been done. The property was inspected by an independent contractor, and they found the structure is not economically feasible to repair. Notice photos and evaluations are included in the attachments. Therefore, it is my recommendation that the city council declare such conditions to be a public nuisance, and to order the structure to be demolished. The owners and others may wish to speak.
Thank you. Does anyone from the public wish to address this particular issue? Public hearing is now closed, the chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. showers, discussion. Halls in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on a resolution authorizing demolition of an unsafe building constituting a public nuisance located at 3421 Glenn Park Drive Northwest. Mr. Benyon?
Are we asking, we are asking the council to authorize the demolition of an unsafe building constituting a public nuisance located at 3421 Glenn Park Drive Northwest? The above referenced property was cited on November 13th as a public nuisance. The owners were issued a notice to demolish the structure. No work has been done. The property was inspected by an independent contractor, and they found the structure is not economically feasible to repair. Notice photos and evaluation are included in the attachments. Therefore, it is my recommendation that the city council declare such conditions to be a public nuisance, and to order the structure to be demolished. The owners and others may wish to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Benyon. Does anyone from the public wish to address the council on this issue? Ms. Reed, give your name and address, please, for the record.
Jackie Reed, 303 Jack Coleman Drive. I only have one question, though. November the...
13th, 2013.
2013? That's only been two and a half months. And do these people live in town, or do you hear from them, or you know that they got these notices?
Ms. Reed, please address your questions to the chair, and then I'll ask...
Okay, well, I'm just trying to find out, do these people have time? Do they live in town, and do they have time to, since November and Christmas, and this is end of January? I just wondered, did they've given enough time to say anything, or do something, or come down here? Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else from the public wish to address the council on this particular issue? Public hearing is now closed, the chair moves for approval.
Second.
Dr. showers, second it. Mr. Benyon, could you explain to the public just generally the process, and just quickly, how long have you been working on this one particular house?
This process has been going on for several years. This house has been in violation of codes. We are on a mission to take care of structures that have been sitting vacant and are public nuisance, or unsafe for several years, to get them torn down. And so, it's been this way for several years. The notices have been out there for years, it's just a matter of now, we want to move to the process where we can demolish the property.
And thank you. Speaking on behalf of my constituents, they want this action to be taken? They don't want to be in a neighborhood with a house like this for years and years? So we thank you. Ms. Kling?
I guess I'd kind of like to echo some of the comments Mr. Russell made. You've done real good on numerous issues, and in the district that I represent, tall grass, weed, nuisance, I know there's a legal process you have to go through, and on structures like this. Having softened you up a little bit, could I ask if you would take a look at the situation pertaining to 111 Marshoots Avenue? I think that's been a longstanding issue, and I'm not trying to stump you up here tonight, but I just appreciate if you could look at it, make sure that's running the proper legal course that it has to go through.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We have no public hearings to be set, we're now at communications and report, communications from the public. When I call your name, you'll have three minutes to address the council. First up is Russell Gay. Mr. Gay, if you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Russell Gay, 15008 Carlisle. I just wanted to thank Councilman Kling for hosting a town hall recently regarding the chicken ordinance and a few other things. Everyone there had a chance to express their difference of opinions civilly. I understand he is in receipt of a document that was produced by Alabama A&amp;M and Auburn University on proper backyard chicken care. I hope you all have a chance to look at it and study other cities to see what works and what didn't work. I know the council is inundated with emails on both sides, and I hope you've had a chance to research both sides. I'd also like to thank the North Alabama Coalition for the Homeless for putting together a meeting of faith-based organizations to address the need for a warming center for the homeless and the needy. The stress was that they would prefer everyone go to shelters, but there are a few who just fall through the cracks, whether they choose not to go, or may have been barred for previous instances, and having the faith-based organization come together to address that need with their backing was a good, it was a good meeting. was a good, it was a good meeting. We all want to help and have a, and to have a place to come together and organize that was great. That's all I had.
Thank you, sir. Russi LaSalle?
Russi LaSalle, Hearthstone Circle, South Huntsville. I'm here for the help to homeless veterans and citizens, and this is kind of unusual for me, and I'm sure you guys will probably like it for the most part. I'm here to thank Mark Russell, our Councilman Mark Russell, and also Sergeant Mark Roberts, who visited Tent City in the last day or so. I get telephone calls the second you guys hit the gravel, and they were pleased to see that you showed an interest in their situation and what you could possibly do to make it better, or at least were asking questions, and they were very happy about that. I also want to thank our Chief of Police for responding to my request to check out the no trespassing signs that were recently put up at Max Luther and the Parkway in the empty lot only a week or so ago, and within an hour, our great mayor was on site and talking with the homeless, and you have no idea how much that speaks to them. They feel as though they're not lost. They feel that someone cares. Again, I got a call before he left the parking lot. I want to thank all you guys. I know you guys think that we just come up here and moan and groan and cry about everything. We're just asking for help. We still would like one of those beautiful parks you were talking about there a little while ago, that we could put together a possible campground and make it a campground, not, not a prison center, you know, a place where they could actually exist until they can move on to better housing out of the eye of the public, and we don't want to create problems. We want to create solutions. And unfortunately, I have to end this on a bad note. We tried to solve a problem with the Richard showers Community Center with the director there, and unfortunately, there's a, an attitude problem with the director. He has suspended our nine and a half year homeless naval veteran for, with unfounded allegations. I have the man's statement totally, and the director has changed his story four times at least, and we want some action, and unfortunately, we've, we're just to the point where we have to do something, even if it's legally. And now, we, believe me, I respect, I respect you, Dr. Shower, as I do, and I thank you for the meeting that you put together, but unfortunately, they don't listen to you quite as well as we do, so.
Sir, your time's up. Do you need extra time?
No, I'm done. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Ms. Kling?
I know this gentleman at the last meeting had raised the idea, and obviously, we know it's very cold right now, but you'd raise the idea about portlets in the overpass. Is something like that feasible? I don't know what the cost would be, or if they would take on the requirements of, you know, maintaining or cleaning out the maintenance of a portlet, but is something like that feasible? Does the city have any authority? Because I know it's a state overpass, but would, would something like that be something that could be worked out? It's not, it's not much, but I just, you know, having to think about that after the last meeting, I didn't know if something like that could be worked out.
I don't know the answer. Do you wish to ask somebody else?
I mean, I don't know, maybe the legal department. I don't want to stump Mr. Joffrel, but maybe he could look into it. I don't know, we'd have to do a legal agreement with, with his agency to maintain, that they would agree to maintain the portlet, you know, cleaning it out so many, so many days per week or something like that, but, you know, if that would help a little bit, I'm just kind of throwing that out on the table.
Okay. We'll, we'll ask that question and get somebody to reply.
Okay, but again, it's not to stump Mr. Joffrel, but maybe he or somebody in his office could look into it, but if that would help a little bit, that'd be something I'd support.
Ms. Tara Bunyan? Ms. Edra Fallon? Ms. Fallon, if you'll give her name and address for the record, please.
Edra Fallon, Huntsville, Alabama.
Ma'am, I need your address, please.
203 Hawkscrest Circle.
We didn't, we didn't get it, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. 203 Hawkscrest Circle, Huntsville, Alabama.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Battle, members of the city council, I'm here tonight to talk about education because some of us are being denied that right at Board of Education meetings. Mayor Battle, you were quoted in the news saying you weren't going to run for governor of Alabama because you wanted to concentrate on education. At a recent school board meeting, you said you supported Huntsville Superintendent Dr. Casey Wardensky. I stand before you tonight to make sure I understand what you are supporting. Do you support parents and citizens not being allowed to speak at Board of Education meetings? Do you support the Board of Education refusing to meet with our duly elected representatives to hear our concerns? Do you support the Board of Education ignoring the public citizens' desire not to change the name of JL Johnson High School? Do you support staffing low-achieving schools with non-certified teachers? Do you support segregated schools? Lastly, and most importantly to me, do you support building the new JL Johnson High School 0.06 miles from an active rock quarry? And would you want your children to attend such a school, or your family members to work in such an environmental health hazard? I find it odd that City Council President Mark, Mr. Russell, was among elected officials, including the mayor of New Hope, and developers and parents who were adamantly opposed to building a rock quarry two miles from schools because of concerns, because of air quality concerns. Mayor Battle and the council, North Huntsville residents pay taxes too. And Mayor Battle, we voted for you twice because you promised we would not be marginalized and our legitimate concerns minimized. Don't get me wrong, Huntsville taxpayers, North Huntsville taxpayers aren't asking for special treatment, nor are we asking for the government to take care of us. We're asking to be treated fairly and equally. We love the city of Huntsville, but we have to ask, does the city of Huntsville love us? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Meg Tilden?
Meg Tilden, 2640 Blue Springs Road, Northwest.
Welcome.
I want to thank Lenise Arnold of the North Alabama Coalition for the Homeless, for the meeting. It was extremely productive. I would also like to thank Mr. Russell for returning a telephone call. I appreciated it greatly, and for everyone working together to get a warming center open. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Paul Proctor? Mr. Proctor, if you'll give your name and address for the record, please.
Paul Proctor, 3109 Gay Hard Drive.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Battle, and I, city officials. In what I read, I only feel that it would be fair if I would use quotes from a book that supports why you have a standing before a flag to pledge our allegiance and have a moment of meditation, for the reason why people here and from afar come to this country, which was for their freedom of speech and religious rights for what the flag is supposed to represent. This evening, I don't stand before you asking you all for your compassion as our mayor would like for our city to be recognized for, but it has been proven not to be a city of compassion or equality when it comes to education across the board. When I look up the definition of compassion, it is used as a noun which reads, "A feeling of deep sympathy and sorrow for another who is stricken by misfortune accompanied by a strong desire to alleviate the suffering." So my question would be, where's your sympathy and sorrow? Therefore, what is, what is it that you are doing to alleviate the suffering? I read this quote that says, I read this quote that says, "A good man, out of the good, out of the good treasure of his heart, bring it forth that which is good, and an evil man, out of the evil treasure of his heart, bring it forth that which is evil, for of the abundance of the heart his mouth speaketh." And reading that quote, by no means is this to judge no man or woman, but for one to consider his or her action as to why they do and why they might say it, as well as what they may say as leaders and representatives. In closing, by saying that, many of you who know me, know me, or may not know, that my son is often with me in a lot of meetings that I attend, that is because I want him to grow up and learn and see what kind of man and father I am, and to know that life is not always, not always about what I do for him or myself, that is also about what you, what and who you stand up for as it pertains to right and wrong. It is not to be afraid of the tyranny of others. Mayor, city councilman, if we was to be one city, one school board, united in front, wanting for our city to be recognized for its greatness, we must have true transparency and openness in our dialogue with the community as a whole, and not background conspiracy having different sides of the town at odds with each other and further creating racial decision, division. It is said that a house divided cannot stand, so do we stand together, or do we, as my mother once said, go to hell in a handbasket? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Terri Michael? It's Terri Michael here. Okay, sorry. Ms. Michael, if you'll give your name and address for the record, please.
Terri Michael, 115 Mill Creek Crossing. I want to thank you for having me out today. I stand before you and not only talking on my behalf, but on the behalf of 36,000 teachers across this country, thousands of teachers here in Alabama. I'd like to talk to you about some education issues today. I have in my hand here an email that Dr. Wardensky had received from the State Department of Education on December 16th stating that there was a survey that was going to be produced, and that all the teachers needed to take it because it has to do with their summative evaluations, a very important survey for these teachers to take. Well, the deadline's Friday. The teachers in Huntsville have not been told about it. I finally found one yesterday that had been told, but that's also the same day that some teacher in South Alabama called me and told me about it. And so, I hit my teachers up, and they're all like, no. So I called the city, I called the state. I don't know if the deadline can get extended, but this is the kind of information our teachers need. This is the kind of information that is kept from them by our corporate reformers such as Dr. Wardensky as a broad superintendent. Now, one thing that's very upsetting about the meeting, the zoning meeting that we had last Thursday, and the reason I'm bringing education issues to you is because you came to the meeting, several of you, and you stood in support of Dr. Wardensky, and I want you to understand that when you stand in support of a broad educated superintendent, you also are promoting those corporate reform agendas, those corporate reform agendas that have destroyed cities like Chicago and Seattle, Los Angeles, Washington, DC, Atlanta. The grade-changing scandal in Atlanta was because of broad people. We have change, grade-changing issues here in Huntsville. So you've got to ask yourself, these other cities that have fallen after their broad educated superintendents and chief financial officers and things have left, people like you were sitting there having to clean up the mess, having to answer for the things that they did. I urge you to please get on the internet, Google, it's information that you can find. Find out about the Broad Academy, find out about the things that they do that tear, in particular, our urban communities apart. If I can say one more thing, you know, I'm sure you all know, South Huntsville grumbles and talks about separating from the rest of the city, okay? You have a problem. It's not one Huntsville. Is that ever going to happen? No, but it should disturb you that parts of your city want to leave, and it's because of race issues. You've got to start talking about race. When you don't talk about race, it turns into racism. I just urge you to understand that even though we had problems before Dr. Wardensky came along, his policies are tearing this city apart, and it's not necessary. If we could all just open our eyes and say, you know, it sounded like a good thing. People from the Broad Academy, it made sense when we read it on paper. Now that we have walked down this road-
Ms. Michael, your time's up. Do you need more time?
Just one second. Now that we've walked, thank you. Now that we have walked down this road, maybe it was a mistake. Maybe it's time to start separating ourselves and start healing our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I want to thank you for allowing the public to get involved in your meetings. I can't say that much about the school boards. I appreciate you all allowing public inputs. I cannot believe my grandson's playing ball tonight, and here I am, right here, city council meeting. I missed his first birthday. He ain't let me forget that yet. Anyway, stay warm, everyone, because the utility bill's going to go up anyway, so turn them up and stay warm. That's a good thing. Several concerns. My daughter was driving to work the other day, and she's trying to get up on the interstate in this blob of concrete sitting out there in the middle of the street. Five people that day where I were questioned what's going on in front of the veterans with all that blob of concrete. I've been told that you're turning that into a two-lane, that's going to stay that way, and you need parking for the Veterans Memorial. Who's engineering some of this stuff in this city? It really concerns me. I want to know who we can hold accountable and be responsible. She says now, it's going to be a line trying to get up on the interstate every day, and we're in a hurry to go to work. So now, there weren't no parking when you built the Veterans Administration. You need to do some better planning in this city. That is wrong if you're going to leave it like that. There's millions, too many millions being put downtown on the brick streets. You're taking up good concrete and breaking these streets again. Please, quit putting so much money in the millions into downtown. I have a problem with that. Also, I attended a variance, a board meeting the other night. I'm very concerned as to what's going on with the variance meeting. Now, Mr. Richard Hughes has been to this variance board three times just to get a lot, as a car lot next door over here on Governor's Drive. We have one person on there that's got a problem with old west Huntsville. She lives in the area, and when they start the meeting, they say, no one has an interest in anything that goes on here. So, she lives over there. But I have a real problem with what I've seen over there. Liquor license can go in 500 feet of a church, music could go in where it wasn't allowed. I've been to many variance meetings, and I've seen a lot of things, but I got involved because I couldn't believe that he cannot get a lot that he owns over there as a car lot. I'll be back, and don't make us have to peel this to the city council board. Y'all, I think this one person needs to not be able to vote on that variance board. She lives in the neighborhood, and she owns the neighborhood as far as I'm concerned. I'm not calling any names out here. Chickens, I'm on a chicken row. Here is an ordinance that I went, thank you, Mr. Kling, for letting me come to your meeting the other night, your chicken meeting. When I left the variance board, I was all upset over that, and then I go to hear the chicken meeting, and I was really upset when I left home. I went to bed that night and slept at 3:00. That's the first time in 35 years, coming down here, the two things has bothered me as much as a chicken ordinance and a variance meeting.
Ms. Reed, your time's up. Do you need extra time?
I'll wipe it up.
Okay.
Anyway, here's an ordinance that somebody took the time out to draw, it's a chicken ordinance. All you people in Huntsville, Alabama, call the mayor's office and call every one of these people up here, because they're going to vote on this chicken ordinance. Leave it alone, and the ones that's got the chickens, let them have them. Don't vote on that. Don't make me get started on chickens. Thank you. I love you. Have a good weekend.
All right, thank you, Ms. Reed. Ms. Kling?
Ms. President, I'm, I agree with Ms.
Uh, Ms. President, I'm, I agree with Ms. Reed and I'm not going to mention names, but the board member that she is talking about has been a person who I've, I've worked with on neighborhood issues. Uh, the person has no financial issue, has no financial interest, uh, really has no axe to grind, but has been a very good neighborhood advocate and, uh, you know, does what I would expect any board member to do, just use their best judgment, uh, for what they feel. Uh, but, uh, I'm very comfortable, very happy with the work that that individual does. I have no control. Uh, overall, I think that person votes the way I would like to vote, but, uh, that person's completely independent. And I think she does a very good job and she's been a very good neighborhood advocate, not just for that immediate area, but for numerous neighborhoods throughout the city. And, uh, those are the type of people we like to have on these boards. And, um, I would also like to throw a little accolade to Ms. Reed. Ms. Reed, uh, was very well-versed and we had a very interesting discussion at that town meeting Monday night from both sides of the issue. But Ms. Reed was very versed and, uh, she, she held her ground, uh, concerning her position. And, uh, I think, uh, the other nine or ten people in the room who were opposed to her felt like, uh, that basically it was a draw between her and them, uh, on that. Thank you, Ms. President.
Thank you. Mr. William Hines.
William Henzie, thirteen-eleven Hiwan Trail, southeast three-five-eight-zero-two.
Welcome.
Uh, several issues. One, the Public Building Authority, and possibly this applies also to the Educational Building Authority, which I didn't even realize existed until I saw a resolution about it in the agenda. It's my understanding that the Public Building Authority is composed of three members, none of whom have experience in construction or engineering. And correct me if I'm wrong on any of this. Yet they, except for the experience maybe that they get by serving on that board, and they are responsible for the construction of all public buildings in Huntsville, except perhaps the schools. The, uh, they're appointed by the council, not by the mayor, so apparently the mayor has nothing to do with the building of buildings in Huntsville. The, uh, biggest problem that has come up in recent years is the fiasco with the city council jail, which everybody knows probably, you know, went way, way over budget. There were lawsuits and I think the city may have lost a lawsuit about that. I'm not sure. The question, my question is, why do we even have such a thing as a Public Building Authority? It just seems ridiculous. Why can't the regular city engineers, I'm sure we have some, draw up the plans, et cetera, or have the drawn, plans drawn up, contracts drawn up with the aid of the city attorney? What's the purpose of this crazy institution called the Public Building Authority? And since they're the ones that are responsible and they, and they come from the council, uh, I think in part, uh, Loretta Spencer lost, uh, recent, last election or whatever it was, uh, to Mr. Battle here because she got a lot of the blame for that fiasco at the city council jail. So I don't know why we have such a thing. Next point. Uh, the Solid Waste Authority burns our trash and garbage and makes steam for the arsenal and therefore helps pay for the trash collection and burn and all that. I've been told by somebody in the Solid Waste Authority that they actually generate more energy by this burning than is needed by the arsenal. Has there ever been any kind of, uh, engineering-type investigation as to whether this, uh, excess energy could, could be used to drive turbines and generate electricity that could be fed into the city grid? Okay, finally, uh, it seems that, that the city likes to subsidize by various means, these TIF districts, for example, new development. When there's, there are many empty stores, buildings in Huntsville, uh, that could be used for developing instead of expanding, especially out to the west.
Sir, do you have much more? Your time's up. Do you need?
One, one last little point.
Okay.
I think it's immoral to subsidize new retail development that will compete with existing stores. That just seems really wrong to me. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Uh, your question about the Public Building Authority is, is very complicated and, and you have some misunderstandings and I'll be glad to clear them all up, but we'll need more time than we have allocated at this meeting. If you want to email me, I'll arrange a proper meeting. We'll answer all your questions. Mr. Joffre, if you could quickly, for the public's benefit, give an explanation of the Public Building Authority?
Public Building Authority, uh, is a three-member, uh, board. It is authorized under state law, uh, to allow for the financing of public projects, uh, either municipal public projects or joint municipal county public projects. It just depends on what is desired. But it is also a way for, um, the public to finance such projects, uh, without having to finance them through the city of Huntsville. The city, the city has a limit on how much money it can borrow. And, uh, at the time that the jail was being built, the city was approaching the cap on its borrowing capacity. So the Public Building Authority was established for the very purpose of allowing financing of this much-needed jail. The members themselves actually have very little to do with the hands-on administration of the project. All of those details were handled, uh, by, by way of contract with the city of Huntsville and its departments. So it was more of a financing conduit than it was an organization responsible for the administration of the construction of the project.
Thank you, sir. If you'll email me, I'll be glad to go through all of it with you. We have no Huntsville utility items. We do have board appointments to be voted on. We have a resolution to reappoint-
Mr. President.
Dr. showers.
Typically, when there are public comments, our questions, we have gone back, just as we did with this last gentleman, uh, to explain, uh, his concern. Now, there were other, uh, public comments made here tonight. And you've gone back in the past and got answers for those inquiries. And I would like tonight to treat this group that have signed in tonight and express their concerns and to address those as we have done in the past. Would you do that?
Yes, sir. Which questions did I miss? I tried to answer all those questions.
You had several questions that was raised, uh, by members of this audience who signed in and made statements and had questions. Ms. Fallon was the first one who came up and had several questions that she was concerned about that dealt with education. And those questions, uh, were not answered, they've not been addressed. I just want us to be consistent.
Sure. And Dr. showers, I, I thought Ms. Fallon was making statements. Ms. Fallon, do you, Ms. Fallon, please go to the microphone. If you have legitimate questions, we'll be glad to answer them. I, I thought you were making statements.
I, I prefaced them with, "Do you support?" And at the end of each question, question mark.
Yeah, and those are personal questions. They're not factual issues. You're asking Mayor Battle particular questions.
I want to know about-
Please address your questions to the chair of the council as a whole.
Okay.
Yep.
I want to know about that, about building the new Johnson Point oh-six miles from an active rock quarry because I have serious concerns about the, um, environmental health hazard to not only students, but to, uh, teachers, principals, and other support personnel.
Okay, and that meeting was covered, I mean, the issue was covered, the school board meeting. Is Danny Shay here tonight?
Well, actually, the meeting was not, uh, the issue was not covered. Um, Mayor Battle made the statement that, um, some, your people had checked it out and that the air was fine. And, um, I know for a fact that that's, um, I don't want to say a lie, but-
Yeah, I, I would usually, I'm not sure you know for a fact, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't call the man behind you a liar. Mr. Shay, if you'll get up, please, and, and tell what you know.
And I'm not calling him a liar, but I know that, um, through, uh, independent research that the facility where the air quality is measured, he said that he measured it at the Pulaski Pike Station, the fire station that's at Pulaski Pike. But they don't have the, um, correct, um, I'm, I'm not sure what the name of the thing is that measures the, the air quality. But the one that needs to measure the P-two-point-five particle dust from the rock quarry that's point two-six miles away, that station is located on Weatherly Road, miles away, at the fire station on Weatherly Road, not the one right there on Pulaski Pike that's closest to the rock quarry.
Okay. So ma'am, is that the question we need to get an answer to, is the air quality around the proposed site of the new school?
Well, uh, actually, I don't know if you need to get an answer. I want to know if you support building a school point oh-six miles from an active rock quarry.
Okay, let me get Danny Shay to explain it. Ms. Shay, I know, I know you were involved in this. You know which issue we're talking about. It's-
I do.
Yes.
Uh, my name's Danny Shay. I'm Director of Natural Resources. And among our other responsibilities, we're responsible for monitoring ambient air quality in Huntsville. And we have a, a particulate matter monitoring station at the Pulaski Pike Fire Station, which is very close to the site where the school will be built. In looking at these, these PM-ten, this fine particulate, less than ten micrometers in aerodynamic diameter.
I'm, I'm sorry, we're having trouble hearing you.
Sorry. In comparing the PM-ten measurements taken at that particular location with those across the city, there's very little difference. And then, and actually, they're not the highest at the Pulaski Pike Station. They're all very close. So the particulate matter concentrations across the city are fairly uniform. The reference to fine particulate matter, uh, we only have one of those stations, which is on Airport Road. But the, the fraction of particulate that is, that comes from rock crushing and, uh, the activities at a quarry are not in the very smallest fraction. So the measurements we're taking at Pulaski Pike are the most appropriate for that source.
Thank you. Will you be available to Ms. Fallon if she has follow-up questions for you?
Sure. And I'd be happy to send you the, because we've compiled that data.
Ma'am, we, we can't have this discussion. We're going to have to go to the microphone if you want to be in public or y'all can go talk. Ms. Fallon, if you want to go to the microphone and ask more questions to do that, we have to have everything on record.
Okay, actually, uh, I, uh, we also have a study that, uh, basically refutes everything that you've said, Mr. Shay. No offense. And, um,
I haven't seen that.
I know.
Okay, okay.
And that's the point. Uh, I think that before we say that we're going to build a school, point oh-six miles from an active rock quarry, that we need to look at all studies and hear from everybody concerned. Because I know that I would not, I would not send my children there and I wouldn't want to work in that environment either. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. showers, are you satisfied? We've answered questions?
Well, there are other questions that were raised, uh, tonight from the public sector that did not get a respond at terms of your question. Thank you, Mr. President.
Moving on. Huntsville utility items, we have none. We have board appointments to be voted on. We have a resolution to reappoint Freeman Hallifield to the Solid Waste Disposal Authority of the City of Huntsville, Fifth Director for a term to expire January first, two thousand eighteen.
Vote approve.
Second.
Motion by Dr. showers, second by Mr. Kling, discussion. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries. We have a resolution to reappoint Nancy Archuleta to the Educational Building Authority of the City of Huntsville, John Paul Two High School for a term to expire November eleventh, two thousand nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kling, second by Dr. showers, discussion. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries. We have a resolution to reappoint R. Timothy Jernikin to the Education Building Authority of the City of Huntsville, Holy Spirit, for a term to expire November twelfth, two thousand nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kling, second by Dr. showers, discussion. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries. Councilmembers, I would like to ask for unanimous consent to consider the nomination of Douglas C. Martin to the Huntsville Public Library Board. Uh, the chair moves for unanimous consent.
Second.
Second by Ms. Kling. Ms. Culver, how do you vote? Ms. Kling? Chair votes aye. We have unanimous consent to consider this tonight. The chair moves for approval of Douglas C. Martinson Two to the Huntsville Public Library Board for a term to expire, that will expire February tenth, two thousand fifteen.
Second.
Second by Dr. showers, discussion. Uh, councilmembers, uh, Ms. Donna Lamb has resigned her post and that's why we're filling this. It's a one-year term. Uh, Mr. Martinson has been active, uh, in the library for many years and, uh, I think it's a good fit for the one year. Further discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries. Councilmembers, are there other board appointment nominations?
Excuse me. Uh, is Mr. Benyon still here tonight? Do you have any slots on your, uh, Community Development Committee that are vacant or do you have persons who have not been attending that we need to address?
Yes, we do have some that, uh, have not been attending and, um, I have a, um, I talked with the lady today. I, I can get with you later that is possibly interested in serving on the board, but there are several who are not attending.
Okay, could you make that available to the council?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other board appointment nominations tonight? We're at ten. Resolution authorized to spend for payment. Mr. Kling?
Mr. President, I move for a payment of vouchers in the amount of thirteen million, one hundred and seven, uh, thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Of a motion by Mr. Kling, second by Mr. Culver, discussion. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries. Ms. Kling, do you have a Finance Committee report?
Uh, yes, Mr. President. Uh, uh, Mr. Taylor, do you have an update on, okay, no update, okay. One other thing that we do have, uh, as I mentioned at the last meeting, I've talked with, uh, Councilman Culver, who services me on the Finance Committee and also with Finance Director Randy Taylor. And we're going to have a public forum, uh, for the public on Thursday, February the sixth, in this chamber at six PM. Uh, basically, uh, Mr. Taylor's going to give a brief overview of the budget, very similar to the presentation that he made to the council, uh, uh, when the proposed budget was, uh, presented to the council last, uh, September. But this is to, basically, it's an open forum, just to kind of let people find out about the budget because, you know, as has been said, it's your money. Uh, a gentleman, I think, had a question about new development and we could talk about arguments or reasons, rationale that's been used for the city participating in new developments. Uh, we're not doing it out of the goodness of our heart, but we do it because of numbers that show that sales tax, property tax increases would, would provide benefit. But, uh, this is not a, we're trying to tell you something. It's more or less to put it out. This is your budget. This is your money and let people ask questions and we'll try to find the answers. And if we don't have the answers, we'll get your name, track down the information that you want and, uh, provide it to you, uh, you know, as soon as we can. But, uh, this is something Councilman Culver and I want to do, just to kind of show that we're open to the public, uh, with our, with our money as we try to be with everything we do in city government. Certainly, any of you all up here are welcome to come, come to the meeting too and, uh, I think it'll be a good session. But again, that'll be Thursday night, uh, February the sixth, six o'clock, uh, here in the chambers here.
Thank you, Ms. Kling. Mayor Battle.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I think, uh, over the last, last couple of days, a lot, lots, a lot has happened. Um, we, uh, on Monday, we had the Martin Luther King Breakfast. We had one of the best speakers we've had, twelve hundred people, uh, crowded the halls at the North, North Hall of Von Braun Civic Center and it was a great celebration of a, of a time, um, when, when a community comes together, uh, which is, is very important to us. Uh, today, uh, we had a ribbon cutting for GE Intelligent Platforms, uh, new jobs in the area. The governor was here, uh, along with the Director of Commerce, um, who used to be the Alabama Development Office Director, um, and, uh, brought jobs to the area. So that was a good thing for the community and it was, uh, it was, uh, we have been, it falls into the sweet spot of what the city does. It's engineering, it's, uh, production, it's jobs and it's quality assurance. Um, they have set up a center of excellence there that, um, that reflects what Huntsville is, uh, reflects our Huntsville job base and does a very good job. Uh, the last three days, um, I, along with the Chairman of the County Commission and the Mayor of, uh, Madison, were in New York, uh, on a, what we would call a media blitz. We talked to CBS, NPR, Fox News, Fox Business, uh, uh, News, Fortune, Scholastic Magazine, and a number of other, um, um, outlets, uh, in the market and talked to them, talked to some of the national media, uh, folks about Huntsville, about what Huntsville's like. Uh, it's one of those times that you can tell your story and you can tell your story to some people who really don't know that story. Uh, it was very interesting. CBS guys said, now that NASA's, uh, winding down and going away, uh, who, who, what are y'all going to do next? And we had to explain to them that NASA is not winding down, is not going away. NASA, in fact, is, uh, doing better than it ever has done, especially from our end where we're building the heavy lift rocket, uh, that will take man back into deep space. Uh, very, something that is very exciting. Last week, we also had a press conference, uh, the school board had a press conference announcing that the graduation rate, uh, for Huntsville City Schools has gone from sixty-five percent to eighty-one percent in the last three years. Uh, very notable achievement for the school system. Uh, and then Friday night, uh, I'll be in attendance and if anybody can go, it's tonight, uh, uh, tonight, tomorrow night and Saturday night, Butler High School will be having a play. Uh, a young Teach For America teacher put together a theater group at Butler High School. Uh, they had to play last year and it was a wonderful play. Uh, this year I went and talked to the, he's got double the number of kids involved in it and he's doing the Outsiders. Uh, and it happens at seven o'clock at Butler High. If you have a chance to go see it, you would really enjoy it. Um, I talked to the, um, to, uh, to the, our acting crew, who are all students, uh, last week and we talked about, um, what this arts program meant to them and what it means for their education, uh, what it adds to their, to the value of their education and- And I was a little taken aback, because they all snapped when you got finished, and that's their way of clapping, I guess, in, in the arts field, but, but it was very fascinating. We have some really talented kids sitting row there at Butler High School, and those kids will be, if the redistricting plan goes through, they will be splitting up to some several different schools over the next year. But one of the things that we can say is that our oldest high school will be Columbia High School. You go to school in the City of Huntsville, your oldest high school is going to be Columbia High School. We're rebuilding seven schools, putting $200 million into building schools. We're, we're repopulating our schools. Whitesburg's going to be a new school. The, either the Jimison or the Johnson, whichever name they decide, is going to be the new school, and it's going to be handling a middle school and a high school. Ed White's going to be turned into, AAA is going to move up to Ed White, and they're going to put about $10 million into redoing Ed White, so that it is one of the, that it can support AAA. And if you talk to the AAA principal, she'll tell you that right now she has about 1,000 people waiting to get into AAA. And there are 1,000 students waiting and have applications to come into AAA. And one of the things that we mentioned at the Martin Luther King Breakfast was that our two most diverse schools, which would be New Century and AAA, are two of the highest scoring schools that we have in the whole North Alabama area. That's something to be proud of, something to be proud of for our community. So, I would hope that if you get a chance, that you'll go to Butler High School, you'll see a play, and you'll be able to clap for some young, young kids who are great students and also great people. And thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Dr. showers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to let you know that I also attended the Martin Luther King Jr. Breakfast on Monday. We did have a, a dynamic speaker who spoke to our current situation in America. A preacher, comments were very well received. On this week, in fact, on yesterday, I was in Birmingham, and I presented a resolution on behalf of the mayor and the city council, recognizing Alvin Moore. He will be one of the recipients this year. In fact, in March of this year, he is being inducted into the Athletic Hall of Fame for This weekend, at the South Hall at the BBC, Ms. Pinky High will celebrate her 90th birthday. Also, my last point for the night is that the U.S. Army Audit Agency will honor the late Floyd Hughes by naming a conference room in Building 4488 in his honor. They also, that is, the family, will be presented, on the 30th of this month, a flag that was flown at half-staff at the Pentagon in his honor. On the 30th, I will be presenting a certificate in honor of Floyd Hughes for his contribution to our city, to our state, and to our nation. I do have, if I might be allowed, to ask the mayor a question based on some comments he just made about education in our city. I attended the school board meeting last Thursday night, along with the mayor and Mark Russell, as we were informed about the new school zones, and where the schools were going to be located, the schools that were going to be closed, the schools that were going to remain, what part of the city certain students were going to be coming from, and what schools they were going to attend eventually. I, I didn't hear in your comments just then, Mayor, you mentioned Butler High School, and they do have some good students in the theatric, theater program. They're at Butler High School, that's, they do have some other high school, Lee High School, Huntsville High. I didn't hear you mention, is Butler going to be closed?
Yes, sir, that's part of the plan.
That's part of the plan. It is amazing to me that if we have schools that are, that we can make statements that they are ideal schools, functioning schools academically and otherwise, that we would close a school like that? And what, what's the rationale for closing Butler? Just before you answer that, Johnson High School is not being closed, just as Grissom is being rebuilt and relocated, Johnson High School is also being rebuilt and relocated. I asked a question the other night, when I heard that the Justice Department had put on the table another zone. The reply and response that we got at the last Thursday night's board meeting was that the board and superintendent could not discuss the Justice Department zone rezoning for the Huntsville City Schools. I also heard the Presiding Officer and others who made this statement, that if Huntsville's plan is not approved, that they were going to sue. Now, can I ask you now, do you know, have you seen the Justice Department propose rezoning for the City of Huntsville? Just those two questions.
Which?
You want me to go back to the first?
Yeah, go back to first one.
Okay, the first question was about Butler High School.
Butler High School, yes, sir. According to the superintendent and the conversations that we've had with the superintendent, they had a construction company and a consulting company go through Butler High School, look at Butler High School, look at what it would take to rebuild Butler High School, to use the building. They've, there's been numerous problems with the building roof-wise, mechanical-wise, water, water leakage-wise, and several other things. The consulting company and the construction company came back and said that, that with, with the number of students that they had there, that the best thing to do would probably be to close that and to re-put everybody into new schools. One of the processes that we're trying to do out of this is, is to make sure that everybody is in newer schools, schools that are made for technology, schools that are made for gains. As you come into these new schools, if you remember back in the 1980s, the county rebuilt their system, and they rebuilt schools throughout this county, and as they rebuilt schools, they, they had people who said, hey, if they will invest in their schools and have that investment in their schools and believe in their schools, then we think that this will be a good place for us to go to school, and we think this, we would put our children in those. When you have older facilities, such as we have had in the past, that are your schools, people don't think that you value your education as much as, as with new, new facilities and new product out there. When we get finished, if, if this plan is approved, this plan will provide, the oldest school that we have will be Columbia. And, you know, and there will have a brand-new, almost brand-new high school for every, every child that goes to high school in, in the City of Huntsville. We will have new schools on the middle school side and the elementary side, and we'll be able to address the needs of our, of our students in the future. As far as the federal plan, the plan that the Justice Department has put forward, I have not seen the Justice Department plan, I have only heard it described as, how did the lawyers put it? They've said it was...
Grave concerns?
They had grave concerns. And that's been their response. I do know, did see the memo from the Justice Department that said that, that they, that they did not want their plan discussed, and that they did not want details of their plan let out. And, you know, and as you're negotiating with somebody and trying to negotiate out something, you, you, until you get to the point where you can't, can't go any further, you try to work with them.
We should not forget that that's the same thing that was said initially, when the discussion of Johnson High School was brought to the public. There were citizens, there were groups, who went to the board meeting and asked for justification, and those citizens was told the same thing that you just said, that that was a gag order, and that they could not discuss the specifics of the recommendation in terms of building new schools, naming new schools, or where those schools would be. Last Thursday night, when I heard that, I felt the same way Thursday night as I do tonight. And that's the reason I asked you if you knew about the program, or had you seen the program, and you've said to the public tonight, no. And I accept that, that you haven't. But I, I think that is not necessary. I heard a gentleman speak a while ago, I don't think we need to spend unnecessary money. If we know the problem of why the Justice Department is unwilling to approve what Huntsville has submitted, then we need to fix it. If the problem is that it's not balanced enough, we need to make it balanced. We don't need to have to sue the Justice Department and spend more tax dollars money because we are unwilling to face reality. Yes, what is that reality? Unitary, unitary status is simply a school district that has one school system, not one black, not one white, but a school district that is not drawn based on, uh, black or white. And the Justice Department is not going to approve Huntsville's plan or nobody else's plan, unless it can be shown that we are, in fact, one school district. I hope that we don't go and have to ask the taxpayers to spend more money when we could go ahead and do what's right and satisfy the Justice Department. But if you must sue, go ahead. We'll continue to not have freedom from this desegregation decree, and we will not have a system that's one system, and we can avoid that. And I hope that the board, and this is the council and the mayor, we don't make the decision for the board, but we got influence. And as it was mentioned tonight, there, from some of the citizens, when we make statements that we endorse a position by another institution, I, I think we need to be careful, because when we do that, we'll be next. If, if they say that the school board is not being completely diverse, then who to say that the federal government may come back and say that Huntsville, the City of Huntsville, in our employment situation, in our diversity? When you look at a city with over twenty, 2,300 employees, approximately, more or less, we've not been challenged. There have been questions by some citizens at some of our meetings about the makeup and the chemistry, and so we're all in this together. Let's do what's right. And again, Mayor, thank you for responding to my two questions. But I just, I'm ended this, Mr. President, but I, I am a part of this city. I worked for the school system for 36 years, and I'm proud of the time that I spent. But I don't want to see the citizens of this city spend extra dollars when we can fix the problem as we submit a plan that is going to have the diversity that it ought to have. The Justice Department is not going to approve a school district that has a white school and there's a black school. They're not going to approve that. I don't care if you try to contact different groups of folk in the community, and I end with this, I am disappointed. Last Thursday, the County Commission and the City Council was alerted that there was going to be a 8 o'clock meeting. That meeting was canceled, some of us knew about it, some didn't. But then we found out at the school board meeting that there was a meeting at 7 o'clock, a meeting with some of the black ministers. Then I was told that that group bought off on whatever presentation was made by the mayor and the superintendent, yet the black elected officials was not given the privilege of hearing the information before it was made public. And so what we're trying to do in this city, we don't need to go back. You know, I, I've lived through the 60s, and I'm read about what happened in the 50s and the 40s. We don't need to go back to that. And if we continue to show that type of direction, the Justice Department is not going to approve our zoning plan. Mr. President, I thank you for those extra minutes to say that.
Sure. Ms. Olszewski?
Hard act to follow. I'll say this, though, I can follow it, because I'll say this, I was supposed to go to a chamber meeting last week with a great speaker as well, but I got the privilege of representing the mayor at Councilman showers, his wife's 32 years retirement from the Army Material Command at Redstone Arsenal, I got to go back in my old turf, and had a wonderful time with a place that I'm not sure I ever saw that full for, and a general, for God's sakes. His wife's got game over there at Redstone and had a, one heck of a farewell, and I was proud to be a member of, and I thank you, Mayor, for letting me do it. I ad-libbed, threw Mr., threw Richard under the bus, took all his heat from him and all the love, and it was all good. And so did our Commissioner, he, he gave her heck, gave Richard heck too, so it was great. The platform thing with GD Dev is wonderful, I appreciate all the effort you all doing to do that, it's amazing. Before I became a South Huntsville resident, I didn't even know it was there. It was, it's kind of a quiet place, and it's good stuff, though, so appreciate you doing what you're doing, getting us more jobs, Mayor. I can't go without, I mean, he came up here tonight, you know, my, the councilwoman before me, she made a comment to me once, she said, one thing about county commissioners, that they get, they get to do something that you never get to do, and that's walk in and give a lot of money to different things. And so, once again, I thank, but, but I'm glad if that's the way it works, that's all good. I'm glad County Commissioner Phil Riddick came in here and gave money. Mayor, he didn't give it to you, he gave it to me, but you got to represent, so I'll challenge the other, the other councilmen to get their money too. But I thank Phil Riddick for doing that. And last but not least, we've been talking about it for the homeless, but it's just as much tonight for everybody, this weather is for real, it's very dangerous. We, everybody needs to be safe and, and take care of themselves, and, and understand that the weather is the enemy tonight, and take all precautions they can to ensure that they're, they're safe, that's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Culver?
Thank you, Mr. President. I too want to come in, I had the pleasure of presenting the resolution along with Councilman Olszewski and Councilman showers to his lovely wife, Ms. Betty Ann, and I'm going to get it right this time upon her 32 years of retirement. She is the First Lady of District 1, and I understand why now. She is an impeccable lady. Dr. showers, you have a Proverbs 31... Dr. Showers, you have a Proverbs thirty-one and ten virtuous woman at your house. Also, Mayor, I am extremely elated with the work that you have done along with Governor Bentley and County Commissioner Dale Strong in terms of making Alabama and Huntsville conducive for companies like GE to come in and, and be creative and, and to some degree kind of reinvent themselves. I was really impressed with the number of jobs, some fifty-plus jobs that are going to be paying in the neighborhood of eighty thousand dollars a year. According to my math, that's some four million dollars financial injection into our community. So I certainly applaud you all for that. Also, I do want to thank our inmate labor supervisors, Mr. Loisel. They cleaned up the homeless camps over the last week or two. And we want to continue to do that. And, and as you and I spoke last week and Steve Doyle, we're looking to do a, hopefully a campout in some of our homeless camps. I, I strongly suggest to Steve that we wait until the weather warms up just a little bit because we're not accustomed to that. But I'm planning to spend a weekend in some of our homeless camps to get a better understanding of, of what our homeless residents are going through, which will also enable us, hopefully, to help them and, and ascertain their needs better. So I'm really looking forward to that, and I expect for you to hold me to that if you will. Great, thank you. Also, I want to, on the thirteenth of January, I had a, well, it wasn't a town hall. Lanier Lakes invited me to come out to their Neighborhood Association meeting. And I was excited to do that. And let me preference my discussion about that meeting this way. Lanier Lakes is in the west part of the city of Huntsville. And Mayor, I know we've been doing a lot of annexation and, and, and annexation is good, but one of the things that I am strongly looking at, especially as it relates to West Huntsville, West Huntsville is so far out that it is making it difficult, difficult for us to provide services to all of those communities. And I got a laundry list of communities that are west, in the western part of our city. And one thing that I want us to do, because they're taxpayers, they're property owners, they spend money in Huntsville, and I want them to get the same representation, basically, that all of our residents in Huntsville get. So with that in mind, we are hoping that we can just, as you said in our meeting today, Mayor, maybe not do any additional annexation other than what we've already committed to and just kind of fill in the gaps to, until such time we can get more services west. And when we say more services, I'm looking at, in the future, trying to get a police precinct along with perhaps another fire station as that area develops to be able to provide those services in a more timely manner. But some of the things that came out of that meeting and, and to Engineering Department, Mr. Richard Kramer and Mr. Joffreyon, I'm going to send this to you as well as to our Chief of Police. But some of the things, some of the concerns that we have, first of all, the process set forth by the city of Huntsville as it relates to determining speed cushions. We had speed cushions installed, one on Summer Cove Circle and two on High Green Drive. And they don't appear to be effective based on information that I'm getting from the community. So one of the requests that they made was to, Chief, Chief Lewis, is to have the Huntsville Police Department to provide a, a study of, of the traffic flow and maybe install the, I'm sorry, temporarily put the speed trailer there to get an idea of how fast people are going. I've been told that people have been going somewhere in the neighborhood of seventy and eighty miles per hour in that area. So, and that's even after the speed bump. So, Mr. Joffreyon, I'm going to send this to you. I want us to look at the legal ramifications surrounding removing speed cushions if it is warranted, whether or not we can do that and what is our liability as it relates to Also, Lanier Lakes borders Pettis Road to the north and Harbin Road to the south. It's developed in such a way that it's easy for other communities and surrounding neighborhoods to access Nats and Waltryanna through that particular neighborhood. So some speeders, of course, live in that community, but there are other speeders who are coming through. Without regards to where they live, we want to take the speeders off, off of the street. And I know I told Mr. Pastor TC Johnson that I wouldn't be making any additional request, but this is far west and, and there is a, a, a serious need there. Also, we're going to have a town hall meeting. I'm looking at dates of April seventh, fourteenth, twenty-one, and twenty-eighth. We're going to clarify that as time moves on. But in the meantime, what I want us to do is to ascertain whether or not the speed bumps are working there, the speed cushions. I want us to also, Chief, get patrol officers out there to run radar. The times that they have narrowed down for us are Monday through Friday from seven a.m. to eight-thirty and three-thirty p.m. to six-thirty p.m. in the evening. Now, I know we can't be there every day during that time, but if we can go out there and run radar and see what the outcome is as it relates to, is it worth it for us to be there? And I believe it is based on the constituents in that area, so that we can get them to slow down a bit. Also, I want us to investigate the possibility of always stop signs, always, I'm sorry, always stops. I understand that citizens in that area, residents coming through, are disregarding the stop signs. So what we're going to do is possibly look at the opportunity to put maybe four-way stops. And I'm throwing this out there and I'm going to send a written copy to all of the impacted departments. Also, we want us to look, we want to look at the possibility of reducing speed limit, the speed limit on Harbin Road. We want to initiate a request for a traffic light study, possibly, at Waltryna Highway and Harbin Road to see if that's feasible. And this is just to name a few. I do have a laundry list, but for the sake of time, I won't go through all of this. In the meantime, those communities, our communities, are petitioning our residents by obtaining original signatures to determine whether or not they wish to have speed cushions in the community. That petition hopefully will be accomplished and they're going to get it to me by March fifteenth of this year. I'm assuming that's March fifteen, they say twenty-fifteen, but I'm assuming they meant twenty-fourteen, so that we can make a decision as it relates to that. And this information comes to me. I can't thank enough Ms. Kathy Collingsworth and Neighborhood Watch Communities for putting all of this information together that certainly is going to enable me to help them resolve some of the communities in that particular part of our city. So having said that, I will stop there. And Mr. Kramer and Chief Morris and Mr. Joffreyon, I'll send you all the entire list of this information. And Mayor, I'll, I'll copy you on it as well, okay? Thank you so kindly, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Kling?
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess like previous speakers from the council, I like the idea of working with neighborhoods. And there've been a lot of, a lot of things that we've been working on in, in the neighborhood. I talked with Dennis Madsen from the Planning Department, and I believe that in the near future, he is going to be taking a tour of specific West Huntsville neighborhoods with Michelle McMullin from Low Mill and B.J. Robinson from the Bailey Patton Estates. And those are two great leaders involved in Neighborhood Civic Association and, and Community Watch. And I think they're going to be very helpful because they're going to be able to give Mr. Madsen some good ground to earth, the boots-on-the-ground input on, on issues that I think will be very helpful as, as he works on his comprehensive plan. Also, I see Joy McKean. I want, Joy, I want to thank you for the work you've been doing concerning the Crestwood neighborhood and kind of working something between Crestwood and the trailer park with TVA to help try to alleviate some of the problems over there. I think when, when that's all done, that that's going to be something that'll really be a good, a good shot in the arm. As I mentioned, we did have the town meeting Monday night, and the primary target was about the upcoming chicken ordinance. And everybody had a chance to fairly lay out their positions. We had diversity of opinions. But Ms. Reed, I don't think anybody cried foul after the meeting. Everybody thought that they had a fair shake on getting, getting their issues out. But good discussion, very stimulating, good arguments from both sides of the issue. And it's very helpful, very helpful for me in listening to all that information. Another issue, Mr. Kramer, had been out with me to the Mayfair neighborhood, and we're looking at what can be done about some of the traffic flow issues that are coming off of Center Avenue, issues about potential dangers with left turns off of Center onto Whitesburg. I know that will take a while, but we'll try to get something worked out on that. But I think that'll be a good, you know, a good step. I appreciate Mr. Kramer coming out with me on a crummy, cold, wet, damp morning. I had a meeting with neighborhood leaders a couple Sundays ago, representing Holiday Homes, Mayor Matt Crestwood, Low Mill, about some issues. And I was kind of enjoyed just the fact that we had time, nobody was rushed, and we were able to, to talk about issues. I think a lot of good information was exchanged. And we have elected officials talking to the members of the public in their neighborhoods and we can exchange information. Or they find out that the city councilman doesn't know everything but is able to do some research and find out how to address their problem. I think that's a, that's a good step. That's, one other thing I wanted to ask if, if I could ask Mr. Joffreyon about, there was a, some discussion that took place at the last council meeting. And I've also, since that time, there've been discussions or concerns have been expressed to me from residents of the Holiday Homes neighborhood concerning the two Oxford House facilities that are in the planning or implementation process over there. I guess a question that's been raised, do those facilities actually have the, the appropriate zoning that they would need to be in that neighborhood?
I know that's a concern for residents in the area. And of course, it's a question that we have to be very careful in investigating and, and deliberating about, being mindful of, of fair housing issues and, and ADA issues, but also being mindful of the concerns in neighborhoods about the integrity of the zoning ordinance and not undermining that integrity, traffic, increase in traffic within the residential areas, and other legitimate police power concerns. We're in the, we're gathering data, Mr. Kling. We've gathered some. Each of these has to be addressed on a case-by-case basis. There's not a one-size-fits-all kind of approach to that. So as, when we've gotten as much information as we can get, we'll report back to you and provide options for the council to consider.
Okay. And I guess one question, I don't know if this is for, for the mayor, Mr. Joffreyon. I know that there's been a lot of work on this road package between the city and the state. Is that going to be coming up at the next meeting in two weeks or do you all know what the timetable is?
I'm sorry. Mr. Kling, here, the agreement came in today about four-thirty. We have not had time for legal to look it over or engineering to look it over either. I think Mr. Davis has started looking it over. So if, if, it's like everything else when you have the legal field looking at it and no offense, Mr. Joffreyon, but it just takes a little while. And so, we'll, we'll move it along as quickly as we can.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Kling. I've been asked to give Mr. Binion time to talk about the city's homeless assistance activities. Mr. Binion?
I'd like to ask Dr. Kerry Walker here from the Downtown Rescue Mission just to give us an update on the status of the mission since it's so cold tonight and, and the capacity.
Welcome, Dr. Walker.
Thank you very much. There's been a lot of information and misinformation out there about what's provided and what's not provided. I'm the senior director over all the programs and ministries for the mission, so I'm directly in charge of making sure that our homeless and residents are taken care of. And I, I just want to assure the council and the public that we have adequate capacity. We have not filled up. Now, we have our standard bed occupancy rate, and we've been pushing fill, but we have emergency overflow. And two nights ago, we slept two-hundred-and-seventy-two total individuals. Of that, about a hundred-and-eighty-five were homeless. The rest were in our residential program. That included thirty-eight children and twenty-one mothers who were homeless, men and women. Our women's is actually a women's side shelter. We had more stay than we had bed capacity. But what we've done is taken some extra mats that we had on the men's side, take them over there, put them on the floor, provided for them. We do have emergency facilities set up in our gymnasium where if we need to, we can turn that into sleeping areas for, for those who come in. We do not turn anyone away in cold weather with a few minor exceptions. We do have some legal issues with sexual offenders because we have children present we're not allowed to take. We also, if somebody has been trespassed from our property due to violence or selling drugs on our property, we don't allow them to return. But other than those, we do, anybody who comes to the mission can stay there. Now, we do have homeless that don't want to come because of putting up that many people, we have to have some rules and guidelines. And some of them just do not want to put up with our rules and guidelines. They're not terribly strict, but we don't want them bringing alcohol and drugs into our campus. Some of them want to do that. So we just want everyone to know we have space. We will take anybody who comes. We will feed them. We give them showers. We have blankets and sheets for them. And we do have plenty of space. And I appreciate all those who support and help us throughout the community. We appreciate those who, who come by. We are the largest provider homeless shelter in, in North Alabama. So if there's ever a question or anything, please feel free to call me at the mission. I'll be happy to tour. I'll be happy to tell you anything you need to know and answer any questions that you have. If you have complaints that come up, please address them to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Walker.
Mr. President?
Mr. Culver?
I'm, I'm sorry. I do have a question or two, if I may.
Sure, if you're willing to answer them.
Okay. And, and sir, I certainly understand rules. Rules are very important. My question is, what if someone were to have alcohol in their system? And when I say in their system, no bottles, beer cans, just they've been drinking. Will you allow them in?
On regular basis, every night, we have people that come in intoxicated, on drugs. The Downtown Rescue Mission does not turn away people because they're intoxicated. We do have a special room that we place them in.
Right.
So they don't disturb the other residents, but we don't turn anybody away. If they become violent and we have to call the police, that's one thing, but we don't turn away anybody who comes in intoxicated.
Very good. And sir, how long have you been with that organization?
I have been at the Downtown Rescue Mission for four years. I've been senior director for the past two years. I came out of the pastorate. I pastored for twenty-seven years. My brother died on the streets of California as a homeless alcoholic. And God moved me to the position I'm in to try to help other men and women who, whose lives may be touched and may be saved and may be helped. And, and that's our goal, is to, to provide for the least, the last, and the lost. As Jesus said, "You do it unto the least of these, my brethren; you've done it unto me." So that's, that's our goal and that's our heart.
My only question is, where have you been? That rescue mission has been a thorn in my side as well as the residents in District Five for a long time. I have been unable to get meetings. I had to employ the help of Councilman Showers, Representative Laura Hall, Commissioner Bob Harrison, and everybody else I could find just to get a meeting under some different administrators. So...
Well, and we have always wanted to work with the city. We attend, in fact, we had, some of my staff was actually at the Nats meeting today. We, we do try to attend Nats. Now, we are privately funded and we are faith-based and we, we're unapologetic about that. So not everybody agrees with the way we do things, but like I said, we are the largest in North Alabama. Two-hundred-and-seventy-two people sleeping in our mission. in North Alabama, 272 people sleeping in our mission two nights ago, I think we had 268 last night, and I fully expect we'll be close to 300 tonight. So I'm open, you can call me anytime at the mission, I'll be happy to even give you my personal cellphone. So if you have a question or you have a need, I'd be happy to, to help, it'll try to solve whatever problem there is.
Sir, I thank you, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman Russell, I'd also like for Lenice Arnold, who's with North Alabama Coalition for the Homeless, to just give us some brief overview of the meetings we had today in establishing a warming center.
Okay.
Welcome.
Thank you. Lenice Arnold, as you said, executive director of the North Alabama Coalition for the Homeless. I wanted to kind of give you an update on some of the availability that we do have at the shelters, so you can see that we do have the capacity to meet the need in the community for our homeless citizens. The Breaking Free Rescue Mission can house up to 90 males and 20 females. The Downtown Rescue Mission has the capacity to be able to house up to 350 male and 100 females if necessary, okay? The Salvation Army has the capacity to house up to 48 males with four additional emergency positions, 12 female, four additional emergency positions for the females also. Our new Futures Lodge was, services our families and our single mothers with, or single fathers with children of the opposite gender of the age of 12. It's normally full, but under emergency situations, they can accommodate one additional family, as well as the Rye Rose facility that actually offers services to single parents also. The Rye Rose facility has actually seven vacancies for mom and kids, which means 14 additional people, and she can accommodate one additional family also. As Kerry stated, we do have the availability to house people that need shelter, and our goal is for the clients to utilize the shelters that are in place, okay? Last week's cold weather identified a couple of gaps for us. Number one, we did recognize that we didn't have an adequate number of slots for individuals that were families, to be able to stay intact, because the shelters are limited for families. And we also had, didn't have adequate slots for individuals that were single parents, because we only have, you know, a certain number of, of slots that take families. We also understand that even though the weather was cold outside, we had individuals that basically told us that they would rather stay in the element than to go to the shelters, okay? So I recognized that that was a problem, and I had a meeting yesterday with clients that utilized the facilities at, at First Stop. It was clients that utilized Downtown Rescue Mission, Salvation Army, and other facilities. And we talked about those barriers and why they were reluctant, were reluctant to use those facilities, and then I had a meeting today at 10:00 AM with the shelter provider so we could discuss where the gaps in services and how we can come to some resolutions to solve those problems that existed, okay? In identifying the need, that we needed some other alternative placements, we held a meeting at 2:00 today with the faith-based community about individuals or organizations that were willing to open up their church facilities or other facilities as emergency shelter-type placements, or warming centers we call them. But our warming centers will not be open only in the day, they'll be open 24 hours if the weather goes 30 degree or below. Currently, Grateful Life is showing, is serving as our unofficial warming center, because their facility is not designed to house, but in order to meet the need, they're making accommodations, okay? So they'll be open on tonight and tomorrow night, and then they'll have preparations to be open on Monday and Tuesday. We also had other churches that actually stated that they were willing to service warming centers also, so we've identified some other possible locations. We had other churches that were offering assistance such as transportation, because we know that after the shuttle stops, and we do thank the mayor and the city council for allowing the bus to provide transportation to the, to the shelters for our clients free of charge on these cold days. But after 6:00, we recognized that there is a need for transportation to the, to the shelters. Some of our faith-based communities have offered their transportation ministry, and they would go out to certain locations from the hours of, between 7:00 and 9:00, you know, after the, the buses have stopped, and then also after a time where some people may have thought they'd be able to manage the weather, but then changed their mind, so now they have transportation to the shelters. We also have agencies and churches that have decided that they would assist with providing food. Another thing that was identified is some of our residents felt like they didn't have enough food if we had a, a bad storm or winter weather where they couldn't get out or it was too cold to get out. So we have churches that have stepped up and agreed to provide additional food assistance to our community in those circumstances. So I think we had a very productive meeting, we had a lot of people turn out, and it just basically showed us that the Huntsville commu- community is willing to help. I do challenge the council to remember that homelessness is a problem 12 months out of the year, okay? As long as we got people standing, staying in camps, we got a problem. Thank you.
Mr. Culver.
I, from the time I met you, I, I knew you were special, and I can't tell you enough how much we appreciate what you're doing. And mayor, back here, when we were, when trying to get funding in the budget for them, this is why, okay? We are Huntsville, Alabama, and I keep saying this, it, it, the genesis was here when we put Neil Armstrong on the moon. If we can do that, I know we can resolve all of our concerns. We did it in 1989 when kilo tornadoes came through, we did it in 2011, we can, we can do it. So just keep doing what you're doing, all of you, Downtown Rescue Mission and Mr. Binion and your department, and we're going to make Huntsville truly the destination place. Thank you, I just wanted to share that with you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. We're now at 13 unfinished business items for action. 13A is ordinance number 14-15 for an annexation of land lying on the west side of Old Big Cove Road and on the north side of Buford Drive. This was introduced January 9th, 2014, regular council meeting. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers, discussion. Ms. Leto, could you explain this briefly?
Yes, this is 45.72 acres of land, it's lying on the west side of Old Big Cove Road.
West side of the world.
The west side of the world. The west side of Old Big Cove Road and on the north side of Buford Drive.
Councilman Culver's district gets bigger and bigger every year, I didn't know you went out to the Pacific Ocean.
This is vacant land, it's the site of a proposed residential development.
Thank you. Questions, discussion? Halls in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries. B is ordinance number 14-16 for an annexation of land lying east of Old Jim Williams Road and on the north side of Martin Road. This was introduced January 9th, 2014, the regular council meeting. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers, Ms. Leto.
This is 0.42 acres of property, it's currently vacant land, and it's proposed commercial development, they're expanding the existing commercial site.
Thank you. Discussion, questions? Halls in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries. C is ordinance number 14-17 to amend budget ordinance number 8979, classification salary plan ordinance. This was introduced January 9th, 2014, the regular council meeting. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. Mr. Thomas, can you explain this, please?
Mr. Council, this is an amendment to our classification plan based upon some audits that we did for various depart- for a department, as well as to add some new positions and delete some old positions.
Thank you, sir. Questions, discussion? Halls in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries. D is ordinance number 14-18 to amend budget ordinance number 13630 to modify the authorized strength of the departments. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers, discussion? Halls in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries. We have one business item for introduction only, it's introduction of an ordinance concerning the annexation of land lying west of US Highway 431 South on the north side of Plainview Drive. The second item, the planning department has asked that we consider voting on tonight, so the chair will move unanimous consent to vote on the ordinance concerning the annexation of land lying on the east of Old Big Cove Road, north of Hampton Ridge Drive. Mr. Kling has seconded my motion to consider this by unanimous consent. Mr. Culver, how do you vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Kling?
Aye.
The chair votes aye, we have unanimous consent, the chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers, discussion, Mr. Culver?
Yes, Mr. President, Mr. President, I, I'm sorry. Never, never mind.
No discussion? Ms. Leto, will you explain this, please, and, and tell us why it needed to be voted on tonight?
Yes, this is 26.66 acres of property, it's lying on the east side of Old Big Cove Road and north of Hampton Ridge Drive. This is vacant land, it's a proposed addition to this existing subdivision, it'll be approximately 35 lots. The property owner would like to close on the property, and the developer would like to begin construction as soon as possible.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Yes. Mr. President, thank you, sir. My, my concern again is, are we going to be able to provide services? I know that is an addition, is it a separate part of the community that it's attached to, or is it an, I'm sorry, is it a part of that same community, or is it a separate community?
It'll be an expansion of the existing ones, it'll be a part of the existing subdivision.
Okay, great, that's all I have, thank you.
Further discussion? Halls in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries. We're now at 15 new business items for consideration action. Keep in mind, 15E has already passed tonight, we took it out of order. Are there any items you'd like to hold?
Yes, Q, R, U, and AA.
Q, R, U, and AA have been held, are there any others? Hearing none, we'll go ahead. 15A is a resolution authorizing mayor to accept a grant from Alabama Law Enforcement Agency. B is a resolution authorizing mayor to execute agreement with the City of Madison. C is the ordinance to amend budget ordinance number 12768 by changing the authorized personnel strength within the various departments. D is ordinance to amend budget ordinance number 12-768 by changing appropriating funding within various departments and funds. F is a resolution authorizing mayor to execute a special employment agreement between the City of Huntsville and Cecilia Summers. G is a resolution authorizing mayor to execute a special employment agreement between the City of Huntsville and Jessica Lauren White. H is a request for authorization to advertise and fill the position of environmental specialist two, grade 15, at a higher rate than minimum if necessary. I is a request for authorization to advertise and fill position of general clerk three, grade seven, at a higher rate than minimum if necessary. K is a resolution authorizing mayor to enter agreement with the low bidder S, J, and L, General Contractor LLC for Cecil Ashburn Turn Lane, project number 6514TI01. L is a resolution authorizing the City of Huntsville to enter into a policy for insurance with the Griff Seabulls and Williams, Inc., for general liability insurance on public transit fleet. M is a request for authorization, authorization to advertise and fill the position of one general service electrician, and to fill at a higher than minimum if necessary. N is a request for authorization to advertise and fill the position of one secretary two, and to fill a higher than minimum if necessary. O is a resolution to declare certain equipment a surplus and be donated to the Huntsville area crime stoppers. P is a resolution authorizing mayor to enter lease agreement with Drake and Harlem Properties for warehouse space located at 3,000 and 3,002 12th Avenue. S is a resolution authorizing mayor to enter agreement between the City of Huntsville and Summit Technology, Inc., for people soft support services. T is a resolution authorizing mayor to modification number 11 to the supplemental development agreement, TIF 5, series 2010A, between the City of Huntsville and LW Redstone Company, LLC. V is a resolution authorizing clerk treasurer invoke Regions Bank, letter credit number L 063908 for Clearwater IV subdivision. W is a resolution authorizing clerk treasurer invoke Progress Bank, letter credit number 800003510 for Southgate subdivision phase one. X is a resolution authorizing clerk treasurer invoke National Bank of Commerce, letter credit number 400511900 for Watercrest subdivision phase three. Y is a resolution authorizing clerk treasurer invoke National Bank of Commerce, letter credit number 400512200 for Watercrest subdivision phase three. C is the ordinance clearing a 1967 Crown locomotive, be declared surplus, no longer needed for municipal purposes.
Mr. President.
Dr. Showers?
I want to strike R from this item to be held.
So you want to add R to the ones to be consolidated? R is a resolution authorizing mayor to enter agreement between the City of Huntsville and Garber Construction Company, Inc., for construction services for the Chaney Thompson Dog Park located at 15935 Chaney Thompson Road. The chair moves for consolidation approval of 15A through D, 15F through I, 15K through P, 15R through T, 15V through Z.
Second.
Motion for consolidation approval by the chair, second by Dr. Showers, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries. We're now at 15Q. 15Q is a resolution authorizing mayor to execute change order number one to the agreement between the City of Huntsville and Consolidated Construction Company, Inc., for north public safety complex located at 4014 North Memorial Parkway. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Dr. Showers, second by Mr. Culver. Dr. Showers, did you have questions?
Just wanted to get an update. I, I know that's probably not what this is about, an update, but I, I do need to know where we are with that project.
Mr. O'Neal, if you'll introduce yourself, please.
Yes, sir, my name is Chris O'Neal, I'm the manager of the Facility Projects Office, General Services Department. Dr. Showers, the project is doing very well right now, actually just tracking slightly ahead of schedule. For those citizens who've come north, from the north end of town into the south, you can see that the, the site work, the contractor took advantage of some of the good weather we had prior to December and was able to get the site work done. They actually have the, the base and the first layer, the three-inch binder course on the parking lot, so when you drive by, you actually see that the, the workers are actually able to park on a blacktop surface. The, all the structural steel framing has been erected, and they have set the trusses and the decking, metal decking, and so they are now beginning to run the electrical conduits inside the, the building, so. Contractor feels pretty good about the schedule, feels like they're shooting for late spring, early summer.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Halls in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries. U is a resolution authorizing city attorney to have the City of Huntsville join as a plaintiff in civil action number CV 13-150 in the Circuit Court of Madison County.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dr. Showers, second by Mr. Culver. Mr. Joffrey on?
Members of the council, I realize this is a little unusual to ask the city council to have the city join as a plaintiff in a lawsuit, but very briefly, as I explained in an email, a memo to you previously, the city has entered into a contract to sell some lots, some surplus lots, that it had acquired in connection with the Church Street relocation project, to sell them to Acanthus Industries located over close to Orchard and where the, the new Church Street will be relocated. There's a deed restriction on, on those lots that restricts the use of them to single-family residential purposes. Those lots have lost their residential character for quite some time, haven't been used for that purpose for quite a while, and will not be used for that purpose. And the, the quickest way to remove the deed restriction, as opposed to trying to track down all of the potential owners or interested parties, is to file an action in the Circuit Court of Madison County and have that done judicially. This will not cost the city taxpayers any money at all, Acanthus is paying all of the legal costs associated with this action, unless one of the private property owners chooses to question or contest that lawsuit. I'm not aware that any of the property owners affected are contesting it, the lawyer for Acanthus is here tonight if you have any questions about that, but that's the purpose in doing this, to allow the city to complete the sale of the property to Acanthus of these surplus lots, and to allow them to add those lots to the expansion of their industry.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Halls in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries. AA is a resolution authorizing mayor to execute agreement between the City of Huntsville and Carehere Management, PLLC, for health risk assessment, assessment and biometric screenings.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dr. Showers.
Second.
Second by Mr. Culver. Mr. Thomas.
Yes, sir. This is an agreement with Carehere Management, they're going to allow us to do health risk assessments and biometric screening for our employees. As you recall, during the open enrollment process, we asked our employees who would like to get a discount on their premiums to sign up for a health risk assessment and biometric screening. This company, Carehere, will be the ones that will help us facilitate that now, so those employees who signed up would be able to have So those employees who sign up will be able to have that assessment done.
Discussion?
Yes. Mr. Thomas, can you give the council some idea of when the main program under this management company will be coming to us for consideration?
Yes, sir. We, we're still working on the main contract. It is our desire to hope to bring that to the council within the next two to four weeks. It's our plan with Care Here.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Further discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries. Sixteen A one has been deleted. We do have a vacation right away. It's a resolution authorizing approval of consent to and authorizing the vacation of a portion of Cedar Avenue right away. And we have one sanitary sewer easement for acceptance. The chair moves to consolidate sixteen B two and sixteen C one. Motion by the chair, second by Dr. showers. All those in favor of consolidation signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries. We're now at non-roster communications from the public.
Mr. President, I'm not aware that the easement vacation had been deleted. That...
Well, it's deleted on my, my agenda, but I'm...
Oh, it's deleted on mine, too, but I, the property owners had requested that that go through, so I was... Do you have the paperwork? And I do apologize if there's been any miscommunication, but my understanding is the property owners do want to move forward with that.
Okay. Council members, I announced sixteen A one has been deleted. The property owners wanted it to go through. It's probably a very minor issue. Is it okay with the council to put this on the agenda?
Mr. President, I think, I think it'd be okay. This is not a hot button issue. We're on television right now. Nobody's trying to sneak anything through, but maybe you can just kind of, you know, a little bit extra thoroughly explain it, but...
Absolutely.
I think everything's okay.
Okay. It is an ordinance authorizing vacation of a ten-foot utility and drainage easement, lots three and four at the CCI Martin Medical Complex. And council members, we're gonna take this up tonight. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. showers. Mr. Joffreyon, if you could explain this, please.
I could. And actually, it's a, a twenty-foot utility and drainage easement. The ten-foot was mislabeled. This, this easement actually was on the border of two lots that used to exist, and this is over by the Clearview Cancer Institute. Those lots have been re-subdivided. This, this easement is not being used for any purpose. There are no facilities located within the easement. Hunts utilities, our engineering department, have consented to the vacation because there are no facilities located within the easement.
Thank you. Further discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries. We're now at non-roster communications from the public. Ms. Reed?
I have about three or four issues. I didn't know what you're gonna do with the nineteen sixty-seven Crown locomotive. Do you have a purpose to do that and declare that surplus? And anyway, I have four more, four more. Can I just touch a base on all of them?
Go ahead and ask all four and I'll try to get you answers.
I have people asking me why all those trailers parked at that church down yonder on the south parkway. Are all those trailers lined up down there on the south parkway and how long are they gonna leave them down there? Now, y'all can find out the answer and maybe tell the public. I don't know. I went down there and looked at them, tried to tell them I don't have an answer. But does the council just get ten minutes to speak on their issues? Is that an ordinance? We get three, you get ten. Is that true? Yes or no?
It's right now, the council, we don't govern ourselves on how much time?
Well, I thought we had ten minutes a long time ago. Anyway, I don't care how long you talk. I missed my ballgame, so I'm still up here. Thank you. Anyway, there's five meetings gonna take place at all the schools about those school changes that's gonna take place. And the school board has all those meetings and maybe we could post them on our channel forty-two and let the people know, 'cause they can get involved into that. And Mr. showers, I know you like to cover a lot of things, and I'm with you on everything that you cover. But I was in my district fifty-five years when we did a ten-year district plan. Fifty-five years in this city. And three of you councilmen threw me out of my district. I'm sad. I still losing sleep over it. So we don't wanna go back, but I'm gonna go back. I'm gonna move back to District Four. Three of you threw me out. Have a good night.
Okay, Ms. Reed and...
Mr. President.
Ms. Kling.
Since we're talking about districts, I just want to point out that ten years ago, instead of the city plan, I came up with an individual separate plan, which among other things included Ms. Reed in the district that she was able to run for public office for three times. And that was the Bill Kling District Plan, which was separate from the, the city plan. I think if Ms. Reed would take a look at Census Traxx and compare Fourteenth Street to Jordan Lane, she might find that there were other reasons, but I'm just throwing that out for what it may be worth.
And Ms. Joffreyon, could you explain to Mr. Reed the nineteen sixty-seven Crown locomotive?
Yes, Alabama Constitution Village wants to sell the locomotive. It's not standard size. It's not in operating condition. And there is a buyer who is willing to pay the forty-five to fifty thousand dollar cost that would take to, to put it in operating condition. It, it's, it's of no real value or use to the, to the museum, and they'd like to use the proceeds to, for other purposes and hope, and maybe to make some of their other, their other locomotive in better operating condition.
You won't let me rebuttal Mr. Kling's statement?
No, ma'am.
I will in the next meeting nearby two minutes.
Ms. Reed, you're out of order now. And Ms. Reed, I'll get you, I'll try to get you answers to your other questions. Sir, name and address for the record, please.
Reggie Hill, six twenty-seven Blake Bottom Road.
Welcome.
Thank you. Just as many others stand before our elected officials seeking to make a difference, we do it mainly to no prevail or to no assistance as from our entrusted leaders comprise rules that will allow them to evade and disregard the concerns of their elected constituency. We witness this at our Huntsville City Schools Board of Education meeting as our academic CEOs go into recess right before citizens' comments to stop TV airing and cut off real communications with the public. I commend our administrators of City Hall for utilizing the TV as a means of true transparency. This minute's application builds strong reverence for our community operations. Let us not waver from this medium. I stand before you today seeking to reverse the ill mannerisms of citizens commenting with no action or even reaction from our voted-in representatives. We are each aware of new housing and zoning issues in the city that have truly upset residents of the south side. Voices all the way in Washington, D.C., along with those in One Huntsville, converse about the racist acts of discrimination and bigotry that will force predominantly black, four predominantly black failing schools to retire their entire existence because our irresponsible and unaccountable scholastic officials have failed them. And amidst all of the fighting designed to pin the south side versus the north side, blacks versus white, young versus old, we witness as downtown expands and our politicians flourish with the vast city renovations. Even with all this despair in One Huntsville, I digress from these issues tonight to solicit a public challenge to the city council, our mayor, and the chief of police, Mr. Morris. We are amongst a time where our people have grown tired of trying to solve problems civically and with high moral code. Our people have grown restless and, and wanting for politicians to take initiative on the pressing matters of society. And sure enough, our people have become intolerant of broken promises, misguided statements, and lack of execution from our central offices. Because of this, we see fifteen-year-olds in clubs killing people, stores being robbed at all-time highs, and even the school system having to cover up disciplinary referrals and infractions to promote a misleading image of safety and excellence in our classrooms. How long will we sit back? How much blood must be shed? And how many lives must be taken off destined course before we orchestrate strategies to combat the ever-evolving diseases of hatred and violence? For too long, our city has invested funds into programs that do little or nothing for the overall growth and goodwill of the entire community. I have developed initiatives to declare war on the elongated strengths of poverty, poor education, and the many social injustices that we face on a daily basis.
Sir, your time's up. Do you need more time?
Please, if you don't mind.
Council members, there's one minute, okay? Sir, you have one more minute. Go ahead.
Thank you. I challenge Chief Morris, the city council, and the mayor to meet with me on the issues and matters of your citizens. I'll be in contact with each of you. However, we must know that we have little time to waste. For every second that we waste is an opportunity for destruction. Dr. Martin Luther King once said, "To remind America of the urgency of now." At this moment, Chief Morris, Mayor Battle, and the members of this council, you are America. A prosperous and safe quality of life for One Huntsville is the urgency of now. Let us move. Thank you for this opportunity. And remember that God has indeed blessed each of us. It is now our responsibility to use our gifts and abilities to bless God.
Thank you. Mr. Proctor, do you wish to address the council again?
Yes, I, yes, I have two questions. The first question is for Councilman Kling.
Mr. Proctor, you have to address your questions to the chair, the council's hall, and there's no guarantee anybody will answer particular questions. Obviously, we're not on trial here, but we'll do our best if they're general questions. Go ahead.
Absolutely. The question is, in reference to the one percent sales tax, is there any issues that's going on that the city should be aware of as Councilman Kling was on TV questioning the possibility of rescinding the vote on that issue?
I have no idea what Councilman Kling said on TV. Mr. Kling, would you wish to answer?
Yeah, I'll be glad to. Well, I, speaking as an individual, I was very disappointed, to say the least. In fact, I'm still outraged that we had a longstanding four hundred and fifty million dollar, ten-year plan between the city and the state. And that takes in a, in a, that doesn't even include the fact that historically, I guess ever since Councilman showers have been up here, we put in roughly about twenty percent in every overpass on the parkway that's been constructed during that time. And those are, that's a state road, and we've had other things we've done on University Drive West, access roads and, and everything. And that's, University Drive West is, you know, Highway seventy-two, some other things. But yeah, the state pulled out of that. I think Mayor Battle did a great job. I know he caught a lot of flack on the proposal, but he stepped up and, and he worked out a deal after the state just literally pulled the rug out from under us. And we've got a deal that, that came up. And it kind of burned me a little bit because between, around Christmas, I drove down to my sister in Montgomery. Now, picture this. I went down I sixty-five, past North Birmingham with all that construction, then went over through Montgomery, the east side of Montgomery on I eighty, and the west side of Auburn on I eighty, just full of construction. So it really burned me. But basically what I said, and maybe it's just me, you know, blowing off steam, but the state pulled out and they reneged on us. I know that Mr. Joffreyon and the mayor have been working to come up with the very best agreement, but yeah, very frankly, if the, if the state pulls out, if they, if they renegue on us again, I'll make the motion to, to rescind the sales tax. They lied to us and I'm, I'm still bitter about it. You know, we're, you know, I know we're supposed to be on our good behavior up here and I try to deal with these issues, but you know, literally, I think the city was cheated out of a longstanding agreement, four hundred and fifty million dollars. Yeah, the state's got some challenges. I understand that, but they had an agreement. I own some bonds with the Jefferson County Sewer Bonds. Jefferson County declared bankruptcy, yet they cleared up their act enough where I got paid eighty-five cents on the dollar back. And, you know, the state has just, you know, they said, "Well, we're gonna change this from four hundred and fifty million to, I think, one project in the ten-year plan for about twenty-five million," or something like that. They won't let us use the ATRIP funds. You know, that would have helped us on this sales tax thing. You know, it hurts people to, you know, the extra sales tax.[1706.11]